I wonder if we can call the Bloomington City Council meeting to order. Thank you very much. I wonder if everyone would please rise from the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silent prayer. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Thank you.
Alderman McGade.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Alderman Fruein.
Here.
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Millamway.
Here.
Alderman Sterns.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you. We do have a quorum. We're going to start with public commentary, and actually, we start with someone who is no stranger to our public commentary, Alton Franklin. Would you please come forward? Thank you. Good evening, Alton. Hi.
Evening, Mayor. My name is Alton Franklin. I live at 508 Patterson Drive, Bloomington, Illinois. I wanted to touch base just on a couple of things. I'd really like to thank you for the mayoral open houses. I would strongly encourage everybody, and especially the aldermen, noticeable by their absence. I'd really like to see a little bit more presence so that some of the things that can be said, some of the good ideas that come out, can be spread about in a way that doesn't rely on everything coming back to the mayor to spread back out. I understand that's one of your functions, but I feel like it'd be good if we could get some more group participation, as it were. Only other thing, really, that I wanted to touch on is, I'm still seeing some things that, not upsetting in a major way, but still a bit troubling with regards to transparency. It's not enough to say we spent a bunch of money. There have been some noted comments with regards, specifically with the BCPA, in that there's $10 amounts that don't seem to have anything specific tied to them, and given how much we have subsidized it in the past, I'd like to know what that subsidy's being used for. And it's not an isolated case. There are a number of other areas where that same thing comes to bear, and I believe that while it may not be pored over in detail that I probably would do it, there's a number of the other citizens that I'm sure would like to at least skim through and see some of what's there. Informed citizenry can be a part of the team. It's one of the things that I have lived my life in, is building teams and being a part of teams, and I'd like to believe that I'm a part of the team that helps to build Bloomington and make it a better city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wayne Brown, welcome. Again, could you state your name and your address, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Wayne Brown, 17 Spring Ridge Circle, Bloomington. The issue for me tonight is that of recycling garbage toters. I know that's on your agenda coming up. Back when you were going to issue the recycled toters, I observed and then realized what the size of those toters are going to be. I live in, I have a very small garage, two vehicles, very little room in that garage. So I called the Public Works Department and found out what the dimensions of that toters were, and the smallest one, the 65-gallon one, has a width of 26.7 inches, that wide. I cut that to the right dimension and found out that that won't fit between my cars, no matter how I try. So if I was going to take a recycled toter, I was going to have to back a vehicle out of the garage every time I wanted to move it out, and then move the car back in. And so I chose not to take a toter. I still have the blue tubs, and I still recycle, and every two weeks I drop that off at a recycling center. Now I know that we're going to talk about garbage and toters for garbage. I have the same problem, same dimensions. But in the interim, I found out that you, the same company offers a 35-gallon toter. That's the width of a 35-gallon toter. Eureka, that'll pass between my vehicles. I don't have to back my vehicle out of the garage in order to get it out of the garage down to the curb. I went to one of the meetings that was held by the, I guess, the Public Works Department about three months ago, and there were about four of those meetings, at which Jim Karch was there, Director of Public Works. And I asked him about whether or not 35-gallon toters were available, and he said, yes, they do make them. I said, would there be any difficulty in your present garbage vehicles, the way they pick up a toter now, pick it up, dump it, put it back down? Can they handle a 35 the same way? And he said, yes. So that's the first point. Second point is, I gather that, I assume, I don't know, I'm guessing, that the cost of a 35-gallon toter would be no greater than a 65- or a 95-gallon toter. So there would be not a cost factor, I'm guessing there's not a cost factor there. And third, to me and others like me, and I think there are many, there is the convenience of not having to move a vehicle out of the garage, there's the convenience of having a smaller space taken up by a toter. These garages are really very small. And it's also a lot easier for some of us who have gained in a few years and don't maybe have the physicality that we once had, to move a smaller toter around. And so, given those three points, I guess it begs the question, why not permit the option for all of us in the city for not only a 95- and a 65-gallon toter, but also a 35-gallon toter? Unless there's some issue that I don't understand, why not allow that? Thanks.
Thank you very much. Again, just for the record, our normal practice is not to directly comment on public participation when this happens once a month. Some of these questions perhaps will be answered during the debate on some of the specific issues, but thank you. And if we can go ahead then to the consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that any members of the council would like to pull for separate discussion? Alderman Fazini?
Yes, I'd like to pull 7E.
7E?
Yes.
Alderman Fazini, any other items? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda except for item 7E?
I'll make a motion to approve except for 7E.
Okay. A motion made by Alderman Schmidt. Second by Alderman Black. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman McGade.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Fruein.
For both the consent and regular agenda, I do not have any personal or business interest in any of the listed items, nor have I received any financial benefits from any of the parties or organizations referenced in these specific agenda items, and I vote yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Millamway.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Motion carried. If you're here, as I think maybe some of you might be, for the liquor licenses or others, we have just approved them without debate. You can, you're certainly welcome to stay. This meeting might be scintillating, actually. Thank you, and actually, my thanks to Alderman Schmidt for making that observation. Thank you. Now, Alderman Fazini, you've been the one who pulled this item for Nycor Gas, item 7E. Would you go ahead and perhaps explain?
Yeah, I pulled it because it seemed like we were approving something now that happened three years ago, and that three years ago, it wasn't clear as to who was responsible for what, and it wasn't clear that, to me, if Nycor Gas was on purpose not cooperating, and when I saw the two different estimates from Nycor, one for 170-some thousand and the actual bill for 280-some thousand dollars, and our estimate as $50,000, I became concerned that I just didn't understand all this, and I wanted more explanation for why we're doing something now that happened three years ago.
Well, I think, very good question, and I think the city manager and I chatted about this a little earlier, and so, just to sort of clarify, there, it's not just Nycor Gas that maybe doesn't seem like they play nicely, but railroads and other public utilities might not play as nicely as we'd like them to, or it's just, I think the city manager would perhaps like to, more or less affectionately than I am, perhaps clarify this. Thank you.
Mayor, you're right. We have great partnership with all the utilities, Illinois Department of Transportation, the railroads. However, every now and then, we can get into some, you know, very difficult and complex situations. As an example, this council's adopted many IDOT resolutions where IDOT says, "City, your portion of this project is X dollars, but keep in mind that when the work is all said and done, if the cost is higher, you, city, are on the hook for the total actual cost, not the estimate." So it's kind of similar and true with Nycor, and as, I hope you all, council, had a chance to look at the staff responses to Consent Agenda 70. Let me first say that there was an error in that, in the current year budget, we don't know how, but the budget should have been 200,000. It has been 200,000 for several years. Ever since, the city staff, the engineers, have been trying to resolve and get this obligation paid. We've got to keep in mind that Nycor had their facilities in a private easement, it wasn't in the public right of way. So it was the city's full cost, you know, to have that relocated as part of the IDOC Hamilton Road Project. Secondly, there is differences of opinion about why in the world we didn't get the Nycor Gas Proposal Contract, which is the last page, signed and executed by the city, you know, upfront. That, even as I have spoken to the attorney of Nycor, we've agreed that, you know, going forward, and this will be an agreement the administration has with Nycor, is that going forward, we do not give authorization for any verbal authorization for Nycor to do any work without properly having the contracts approved. So be that as it may, I think the other thing, and I think staff, the engineering staff, very rightfully, was trying to get a breakdown. When they saw the sticker price of the actual cost being 276,000, they just asked for more breakdown, you know? Don't you have some invoices, things of that nature? Well, the response from Nycor is that this basically is what you get. This is what any city gets, any county, you know, or any other state agency, when they have to have Nycor do that work. Apparently, even based on our request, they just said they don't have the ability, nor it's not their policy or practice for proprietary reasons, contract reasons, et cetera, et cetera. Be that as it may, I think the very positive thing tonight, what we are trying to do is close a last chapter on a very good, very positive Hamilton Road Project. This is, I think, the only outstanding, you know, obligation we have, as opposed to paying what typically Nycor, and what Nycor's been asking us, 276,000, they are willing to accept 200,000, which is what we were budgeting, you know, from the very beginning. Knowing that, yes, it's a little higher than the estimate, much less than the actual, but we do have a good, strong agreement administratively going forward. We're going to do things differently so this doesn't happen again. Either Jim Karch, Director of Public Works, or myself would be happy to answer any other questions.
Just one other, and I appreciate the fact that we're going to not do this again in this manner. That's a big plus for me. Part of what I read was the city of Bloomington budgeted $50,000 for this, and then Nycor budgeted 182, and then they gave us a bill for 276, and now they're willing to settle for four times what we thought the project cost. Why were we so different?
Again, the 50,000 is an error. The only time 50,000 showed up in the budget is in the current fiscal year 2014, and that is, we don't know why, because as I worked with Jim on many of the prior year's budget, it's always been 200,000. That's, because even early on, we knew it was going to be very close to 200,000 in cost. So again, it's an error, it's an inadvertent mistake that somehow that 200,000 got changed to 50,000 in this current year budget.
Okay, that, everything I read said 50, I didn't realize that it was an error at the time. Okay, I can accept that. So now we're not really that far off from what we thought it would cost to the two times they thought it would cost, and we've settled somewhere down near where we thought.
We're saving $76,000 by council's approval of this settlement that we've negotiated with the attorneys for Nycor Gas.
And we're paying it in this year's budget rather than three years ago.
Yeah, and we've earned interest on the saving, on that money since then.
Or, put another way, they've lost interest. Yeah, thank you, city manager.
Alderman Schmidt?
Just one other issue that I wanted to follow up on. I was really concerned to see that apparently numerous times we reached out to Nycor and they never even bothered to return our calls. You feel now with this recent conversation that we've solved all of those communication problems, that we're really, in a, I mean, I can't imagine that we keep calling and, you know, and then after the fact, they say, "Here's the bill." I'd hate to see that continue to happen.
Again, I have, you know, trust and confidence in the information from our engineers. I sometimes have heard differing stories when I've talked to the Nycor representatives, but your first point, going forward, we will have a sit-down discussion with the people that not only our engineers deal with, but there's going to be other people in that meeting, Barb and myself. We need to make sure that their higher officials are on board and they agree that going forward, that is unacceptable, for both parties. You know, when requests are made and there's no response, and the directive I'm giving to our staff is that when you get an unresponsive company like that, again, which is a good corporate partner, take it to your superior, and then, and if you don't get any traction, take it to the city manager. There's even times that we'll have a letter signed by the mayor going out to company presidents. But again, that length of time, I think, is shocking to see why wasn't there that response, but it won't just stay kind of at a staff level going forward. Our directive is get your supervisors, the manager's office involved. We can help make sure that the right people put pressure, you know, to make sure that there's action, so, but that is going to take another meeting, follow-up meeting, you know, with some Nycor representatives to insist upon that, as well as this contract has to be executed, you know, before any work's done by Nycor going forward.
We can always do a press conference and say, "Where in the world is, fill in the blank, particular place? I'm happy to do that. You let me know. We're there." Yeah. You can always use the court of public opinion, but anyway. Other, Alderman Fazini?
Yeah, actually, following protocol, I guess we should make a motion.
Yes, actually, I was about to ask for that. Is there a motion to approve? Actually, just before I accept that motion, oh, okay. Motion by Alderman Fazini to approve item 7E?
Yes, I make that motion. I'm not happy with what happened, but I'm satisfied where we're going forward.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fruein. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Thank you.
Alderman McGade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Fruein.
Yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Millamway.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion carried, and we move on to our regular agenda, item 8A, scope modification to the professional services contract with FOTH Infrastructure and Environment. I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, and by the way, I was remiss in welcoming you back.
Oh, thank you.
I'm glad that, for those of you who've been to our last exciting episode, you may not have realized that our city manager was out for a while, and we're very happy to see you back.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Nice to be back. Mayor and council tonight, our first item deals with a portion of some of the expenses we're going to be having to undertake in order to continue on on a very aggressive schedule for the $10 million street resurfacing project. I want to start out by asking Jim Karch, Director of Public Works, to just show a few slides and give you an update of the importance of some of this underground utility investigation that has to be undertaken and to be completed in a very, very short timeframe, which is causing us to come back to on a contract that while has not been put out for bid, has some very, very attractive and competitive rates for it. So with that, Mr. Karch, if you would proceed.
Thank you, City Manager Hales. Mayor and city council, tonight, what we're trying to bring to you under 8A is the ability for us to go out and start looking at the sewers underneath some of the roads that we have brought to you, both under the bond, potential bond, that the city council is currently considering, and also next year's potential resurfacing funds. While those have not been approved by the city council, I'll be showing you in just a minute why it's important for us to get going on these items now, and that's why we're asking for your decision tonight. Let me tell you a little bit about what we've already started. What we've already started is putting together a list of the streets. We saw an email today in front of you, and also in an email today, a map showing that proposed 2014 resurfacing plan list. We also sent to you some logic behind, how do we choose those streets? You know, as I sent you in the email, I'll reiterate even tonight, that there are many streets we could point out, in your ward, in your individual wards, from what we hear, there's a lot of streets out there that have need. So we have to have some logic behind how we choose the streets that we choose, and we have to continue to move this ball forward. What we've done, as we've already started, as you can see in the first two checkmarks, evaluate and refine the projects, the streets that we're looking at, what we're asking for tonight is the ability for us to extend an existing contract that we have underneath the sewer master plan, that we already have under contract, so that we can, we have very competitive pricing. We don't know that we could get the same pricing again. You'll notice in the council memo, we give you a range of what we've seen. This is on the cheapest end, the most affordable end of the televising. The quality that we've gotten to this point, the coordination, has been very acceptable. We've been very pleased with it, so I can tell you that as well. And for us to extend this contract, although it's under the term of FOTH, really, this is, they're the front person for the telescan who they have the contract with that will be doing this work. So what we're asking then, if we look at the next, you've got this map, what we look at is, let's look at the schedule in front of you. There's a task scheduling, and this is why we're bringing this to you tonight. This task scheduling, we're looking, and we're already in September, our staff, as you can see up on the screen, the second row down, we're already starting to field evaluations, looking at the pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalks, manholes, inlets, all the things that we have to do to take this out for contract. If we don't get this sewer televising underway, that's why we're bringing this to you so aggressively. If we had to go out for bid, for example, I don't know that we could make the schedule of March trying to get this bid. What we're trying to do as a staff is, under your direction, under the city manager's lead, we're trying to get this bid in March so that we can take advantage of very early season pricing and then early season commencing. And so, in order to do that, you can see up on the screen with televising, 145,000 to 160,000 feet of sewer, that is a lot of sewer to televise. So that can take many months for us to get it done, because it's not just televising it, you have to process that video, you have to actually send it off, make sure that we've really evaluated that for the quality of that sewer pipe, so you can see up on the screen. That's why we're bringing this to you tonight. You've got also a document, a draft document in front of you tonight, kind of looking at, we're trying to eventually get some direction from our council, although we cannot wait, we're trying to move forward with looking at the streets. We want to bring the issue for your consideration and a draft proposal for you to look at. What will we do with curb and gutter? We've talked about this a lot as a staff, we've talked about it a lot as a council, but where the council lands on, do you replace every piece of curb and gutter that we hit as far as resurfacing? As you can see up on the screen, that really cuts in half or more how many streets we can resurface, but if we don't touch anything, we have a very poor customer service with some folks. So there's a balance. This is a philosophical governance decision that the council eventually will have to make. As a staff, we're trying to at least let you, give you some things to consider, give you a starting place as a council to consider. That document, we're not asking for action tonight, we're giving it to you and letting you consider that. City manager will be bringing that to the council at a future date. We are continuing to move forward. That's not something that we're waiting on to try to get this project bid. And then, lastly, again, if there's any questions about what we're doing, we'd like to entertain that tonight, but again, the key, one of the key things that I want to focus on with this draft 2014 block-by-block list that you have, is that this list really is approximately about $15.4 million. It is more money than we have budgeted under the bond, it is more money than we have budgeted under what we have to resurface next year. The reason we did that is because we anticipate some of these sewers we're going to go into are not going to look pretty, they're not going to be in great shape, and so if we try to do only the minimal amount, then what's going to happen is then we'll be scrambling with what we do to meet the aggressive schedule we have, let's under-promise and over-deliver, let's look at all the sewers that we can and then cut from there down, and then we can start dealing with the sewer issues as we find them. So we're trying to be aggressive in our proactive planning, and then we're trying to be aggressive in our scheduling so that we can make this happen. It's important for the council to know, this is a lot of resurfacing for our staff this next year, for both contractors and for the city to undertake. We've never done anything close to this, and so this is going to take a lot of coordination and a lot of, we're also going to be looking to get outside help to make this happen, so when this happens successfully, which it will, this will be a great accomplishment for the city. What questions you have at this point?
Can I just make a couple of quick comments? First, again, the item tonight for the council is to approve, at our recommendation, this contract award with FOTH for $200,000 for the work that was just mentioned. As far as the curb and gutter, next Monday's Infrastructure Committee meeting, we'll be talking about this more in detail and have some follow-up discussion of what have we learned from the Locust Colton CSO. You know, there's a point, there's some good information here, but we need to spend a little bit more time with that committee. What can we learn from that? Lastly, I think we always want to point out, you know, we ask staff to do a very professional analysis of what they would recommend in the way of street projects, especially for a very important project like this. However, ultimately, the decision is to the council, and each year, even for our regular resurfacing, we are in practice, always come to you as early as we can to make sure that if there's any other priorities or issues that you want to add to this, you know, ultimately, you have that final decision. We wanted to make sure, though, that with releasing this map, the caveat to all citizens has to be, this is still a preliminary list, and we are trying to avoid any premature cutting into a newly resurfaced street because of sinking, collapsing sewers, you know, breaking water pipes that really should have been replaced before the street resurfaced, and any other outside utility work. And all that takes time, and that's why this contract is most important. Secondly, again, as Jim said, we are going to use whatever outside help we need, because our staff just doesn't have the capability. It's not only the $10 million, we also want to do the $4 million we normally would be spending, so this is ultimately going to be about a $14 million street resurfacing project next year. Keep in mind, though, that from the bond proceeds, costs like the FOTH 200,000, any outside consulting engineers work, testing services, et cetera, et cetera, will be coming from those bond proceeds to help us. So with that, Mayor, I turn it back to you and the council.
Thank you. We, I'm going to start. Thank you. We, I'm going to start with, we've got, I'm not going to take the staff and other presentations away from our time. Who would like to speak on this? I see Alderman, I see three. Okay, so let's say, give or take four. Four, approximately three or four minutes apiece. Not going to be draconian about it. Starting with Alderman Lauer.
Thank you. And Jim, thanks so much. I asked you some very pointed questions in our subcommittee meeting, and you've answered many of those questions already. Just to clarify, though, some of this observation with the television in the sewers should be good for ongoing work into our fiscal year 2015, 2016, and beyond. Is that correct?
Great point, Alderman Lauer. Yes, that is, that is correct. You'll see up on the screen what we're doing with this sewer televising is, we actually get into the pipe. We actually rate it, and if we don't use it now, we still utilize that rating. And as we talk about, overall throughout the city, we have got to get into all of our sewers. That's part of that sewer master plan. Whatever happens with the street resurfacing, all of the sewers that we do are a benefit, and it will help us push that overall sewer master plan forward. So this is, this truly needs to be done anyway. So this is a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, I'm going to go in order from my right to left. Alderwoman Schmidt.
I think that Kevin touched on a couple of things that I was interested in. I just want to make sure that I understand that when you get in underneath the street, if the sewer work is so extensive that it's really going to be costly, that's probably going to get cut out of this next round.
Yes, that is exactly right. And that's why we're televising it. The only way that would not be the case if for some reason we were able, if it was a major point repair that needed to be done anyway, and we could accomplish that and get it done in that timeframe, I'd hate to preclude, but yes, in general, if the sewer pipe is degraded so bad, we can't fix it in time of, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for those candidates to eliminate.
Right, and obviously, I have a concern since basically everything in my ward is very, very old and failing. But I, again, you're saying that if in fact, we may, we may agree on a list, but there may be a sewer failure during the course of your work in the spring and summer, where there's a major sewer failure and you're just, you might have some flexibility to go ahead and address that as opposed to just doing a sort of quick repair job and putting it off for the future, or how much flex?
We're not going to do a quick repair job with a whole bunch of other issues. You're correct in the fact that if we can fix it quickly, if it's, you know, one point has collapsed, we need to get in there and fix it quickly anyway. We're going to do that. We need to get that done. Because that might happen. That is not that unusual to find one section of very, very much failed sewer pipe. You might be looking on the screen, and it's not uncommon to see if it's cracked and actually fallen in and collapsed in. We can go in there and fix that point repair and still be able to take care of the street.
And then one final question for situations, obviously, you're doing down the main line, and then residents can hook in and upgrade their own connections from the sewer and water, if you're getting into sewer and water. Are there going to be any programs available for, maybe for people who don't have the money but want to do that upgrade in some of the older parts of town, like CDBG money or low-interest loans? Or will we be pushing some of that information out to people?
Mark Huber, our Director of Planning and Code Enforcement, might be the best to address that. But yes, there is CDBG funds available. I don't want to speak for him, but...
Let me just say that we will be bringing to you this fall kind of a draft of next year's proposed CDBG program. That'd be an excellent time to kind of modify that so that there's maybe more money available for some of these lateral replacements. So I think that will be coming up in the near future. I do want to point out, and Alderman, you make a good point, as indicated, this is televising the main lines. We've talked off and on, but we still haven't been able to finalize with the council a policy going forward, because ultimately, it's like when you get into, you know, main lines that are 100 years old and have to be replaced, you don't want to do that and then resurface the road if you're leaving all those laterals that are also 100 years old. Now, that's not to say that we've solved that issue, because as indicated in here, that's usually a property owner responsibility. It is, you know, if you have the time, and I'm not saying we do, if you have the time, a lot of times, major projects like this, you'd actually be requiring property owners through special improvement districts and things like that to replace those laterals. So both main line and laterals all get replaced at once. I don't think we've done that in the city of Bloomington. I've done them in other cities, but they're very time-consuming. And that's why, again, a lot's going to be determined from the main line. And that'll tell our staff a lot of what could be the condition of the laterals. But sooner or later, in fact, hopefully next Monday, with the Infrastructure Committee, we'll talk a little bit more about the laterals. Not that we're going to solve the issue between now and next summer, but again, that's still one of those ongoing concerns. How do we, as we go with this block-by-block total infrastructure replacement, those laterals have to be part of the puzzle, the solution at some time or another. But, you know, it may be later than sooner.
Thank you, City Manager, for highlighting that, because that is a concern, you know, that is good to know. We can do all of this sewer televising, and if the laterals fail, which they do often, by code, those are private in nature, all the way from the T out. And the city currently has a practice of if they fail and are causing issues for the traveling public or pedestrians, then we'll fix those laterals on our own dime. That has been our practice, but that's what the city manager is talking about, that where does the council want to go with that, that current practice and also city code?
Thank you. Alderman Bligh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim, thank you. This is wonderful. And I just feel that there's some excitement as you talk about this, as we start tackling some of these projects.
I'm an engineer. It is exciting to me sadly.
Exactly. And I'm excited, too. I mean, a lot of the phone calls that I get from residents are about the condition of the roads and what are we doing about it. And I think this is a well-thought-out, well-laid-out plan, and I'm on board. I like what we're doing here. And I also like the fact, as I look at this map, it's well-spread out throughout the city. I think that we're not just targeting one area. I know that Ward 7, West Side, has some challenges, and I think that we've created a set of criteria that we're going to follow, and it's going to be consistent across the city. So I think that's going to be popular amongst the public. One of the things I wanted to ask is, I looked through some of the emails. I didn't see this PowerPoint in any of the emails that were sent today. Did I miss it by any chance?
No, we can send that out. It will be public record. We can send that out to the City Council specifically.
Right, ideally, if it's possible, to get it just as a link on the website itself, because a lot of times when I get calls from residents, I like to direct them to some of the information that's out there. And I think this is very clear as to what our plan is. It's not just willy-nilly. We're, we have a clear direction as to where we're going, and I think that's fantastic. I know that the citizens are going to be on board.
Very good. Hopefully, the City Council is even starting to notice some improvements on the Public Works website. We've really been putting a lot of additional educational material out there. So you'll notice a lot of times when I respond to the citizens and include you, we'll also always have links to provide that additional information. So that's good.
And that's always appreciated, too, especially from the mayor when I'm dealing with all nine wards.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Alderman Fazini.
Yeah. You, for several years, have been hoping for more money to help move us forward on streets. And I think maybe a quote of Be careful what you wish for. I can see the amount of work you're going to be having. I'm going to read a sentence out of the prioritizing Bloomington streets for repair. It says, "Change the dynamics from a continual uphill climb to a manageable situation in which the city truly has road repair under control." I'm sure you've been waiting a long time to be able to make that statement, and I think it's great that this amount of money will do it. I believe that when we made the presentation, we were talking about streets. And as it was discussed, and as people were challenging whether or not we should do it, sewers came into play, and the eventual motion was streets and sewers. And I think that's one of the advantages of the debate. You improve whatever you're trying to get done. Now, I also need to emphasize that this came out of the Finance, Administration and Finance Committee, and it is phase one. There are other things that need large amounts of money, and whether they're going to come from increased taxes, increased fees, or more bond issuance, we don't know. We do know we're going to have to do things in all three of those areas. This $10 million was not a solve-all. We might end up doing another bond that includes streets and sewers. That could be another $5 or $10 million. We might do something that will help our infrastructure. That could be $20 million. We tried to make that very clear out of finance, that this is only phase one. There's going to be a phase two, and a phase three, and a phase four. So appreciate all the work you're doing to help with phase one, and that's all it is, is phase one. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Alderman Fazini. If I could, too, it's important for the council to know, we've made a lot of changes in the last five years. We've changed our permanent pothole patching practice. We've been doing a lot more internally with our staff. They've been doing just a tremendous job with our roads. We've been doing a lot of preventative maintenance with Reclamite, CRF. We've been continuing to expand all of that. What I'm trying to say is that we need, as a staff, once we get our legs back underneath of us and we're done with this bond, we need to, we'll be bringing back to you kind of a where are we at now? You know, we've been trying to do a lot of bond work. We've been trying to do that. And Alderman Fazini, as you said, what we really want to do is get to the point where it is manageable. We do have a good, solid plan where we can take care of our streets. Potholes are nothing more than a symptom of the overall condition of our streets. And whenever we can start getting more of those in control, and I'm not answering as many pothole emails, I'll be a big happy camper. So that'll be great.
I bet you will. Okay, I think Alderman Fruen, you had a comment as well. Excuse me. Sorry, I missed you.
Very quickly, Mayor, and this is a reactionary comment, so for what it's worth, and not to get distracted, but we've been spending a lot of time lately on our committee work and discussion of the efficiencies of committees, et cetera. And what I've heard in the last few minutes, I've heard referring this back to the Infrastructure Committee. I've heard comments that this was looked at previously by the Administration and Finance Committee. I think it's a huge project that we've all been talking about as a council as a whole for years. So I think we ought to just keep in mind how we're going to communicate with each other and on this whole process, because I don't think we can be bouncing it around between two different committees and a discussion as a whole. I'm thinking about next Monday night, if this comes to the Infrastructure Committee, what's our group going to do other than send it to the City Council?
Right.
So I don't want to get distracted on the committee situation now, but we need to connect the dots on our discussion.
I'll make a couple remarks during the mayoral remarks. I think we're, it's pretty clear that there's a consensus on the council. I've now spoken or heard from everyone that I think we're phasing out our committees, and I don't think there's going to be much love lost, from what I understand. But Alderman Fazini.
I don't think we made a motion yet.
Well, would you be prepared to make that motion?
Yes, and the next time, we get to the next item, we should maybe start with the motion. I move that we approve the $200,000 as being proposed by staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman, second by Alderman Fruen. Okay. At this point, I think we've spoken, and can you please call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Alderman McHale.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Fruen.
Yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Millamway.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Let's move on to item 8B. And get my glasses back on. Order portion of the Rerick Pacific Company 65- and 95-gallon refuse carts. And I'll turn this over to our city manager. I think you're going to ask Jim Karch. We're going to be probably needing your services again here.
And Mayor, let me just say that, you know, there's been past discussion, and tonight, we're asking council approval to continue with the purchase of carts from Rerick Pacific Company. And this $950,000 will allow us to purchase 65- and 95-gallon refuse carts in order to implement the household, weekly household refuge collection. We anticipated this in the capital lease proposal in fiscal year 13. So yes, we are going to have to shift that over to 2014. But, you know, it's, we're pleased to say that the trucks have come on board. They did come in in a timely fashion. That doesn't always happen. So with this approval tonight, we'll be able to get those carts ordered, manufactured, and delivered so that we can begin implementation of the final phase of the conversion to automated solid waste collection that leads for household refuge and recycling.
Okay. Before we get, do you have any questions of administration? And then is there a motion to approve item 8B? Nobody's willing to approve? Well, Rob, I mean, you said we had to have these due. Come on.
I would actually like to amend what is being suggested
Okay.
and add that we authorize staff to purchase 65, 95, and 35-gallon carts. And I don't know what the cost would be differential, but my motion would be that we spend the money, but that we add 35-gallon carts as an option.
Okay, I see all kinds of things lighting up here. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. So we have a motion made by Fazini. Alderman Schmidt, second. And, oh, the lighting up was just to make the second. Who else would like to speak to this? Alderman Black and, or the city manager.
And an appropriate.
Well, we expect that. So Alderman Black, we'll start with you. Alderman Schmidt, and then Alderman, hey, oh, excuse me. Then we'll go, we'll start with Alderman Sage, then, and then Alderman Black and Schmidt.
So just a point of clarification. Will the, if the amended motion is approved to add to 35-gallon, will that do anything to impact the efficiency of the program?
Yes. And when you talk about efficiency, I would include the administration, the inventorying of three different sizes of carts, the potential for greater number of changes. It could further complicate what would be the ultimate new revised garbage fee schedule, which we're going to recommend be more user-based, that, you know, the more volume you put out there, if you put out a 95-gallon cart at that residence, but another residence has 65-gallon, and that's all that they need, then there should be a price differential there. We did bring up the 35-gallon as an alternative early in our solid waste, you know, financial report as researched by the Public Works staff. Yes, we can always provide unlimited number of options to our customers, but it always comes with consequences. And the difficulty is going to be is, I think we've had good success with recycling, going from having just the two sizes, 65, 95. If we do open the door, and again, we're not saying that we shouldn't, but, then it does further complicate. It is going to make, you know, three different sizes. What we want to do is get people to plan for the peak of what they have to put out each year. I think everyone that, you know, up here can think of Christmas holidays and other holidays when you have to pack, you know, one, two, three garbage containers. Sometimes customers think, you know what, I'm going to try and get by with the bare minimum, the 35-gallon. But when I need to have more room, should I get two 35-gallons? Or would one 65 work? How do we begin to, you know, to price 235s or 6595s? So from a cost-efficiency standpoint, right now, from an administrative standpoint, it is most cost-efficient to have $60, or excuse me, $16 per month per household, period. But that's not very user-friendly. That's not necessarily a user-based approach to pricing that. So again, I'll just leave it that it does further complicate it. It does, you know, raise some potential challenges. Not to say we couldn't overcome them, but we do see that one of the best practices most communities use, there is a few that have gone with the smaller containers. But that's the exception as opposed to the rule for those cities to have many, many more years, you know, with automated garbage collection than we do. With that, you know, Jim, is there anything else you kind of want to touch base or answer as part of that question?
City Manager, I think you hit that. The only thing I would add to that is that one of the things that we had heard, because we did call around, that was one of the things that, like City Manager had said, in the second interim solid waste analysis that was sent out in January of this year, that there was multiple pages that covered this topic, because we knew this was going to come up. And actually, Mr. Brown had said, I got to speak with him quite a bit, which is great. It was an enjoyable conversation. I told him the same thing that I have for my own house. I said, I have to back out. I have a two-car garage. I have to back out my vehicle to get my 65, my 95-gallon out as well. And so that was a, something I have to do. And I think a lot of people I talk to already have to do that. But one of the other concerns with 35 that we'd always heard when we called around was wind. You know, if you look at the overall in that report, on page 17 of that report, it talks about the height of it. The height, actually, is not any different than the 65-gallon. And as Mr. Brown had pointed out with measuring tape, on one dimension, it was six inches. The other dimension, it's five inches. So it... five inches. So it gets a little bit more narrow. One of the complaints we had heard was, it doesn't have the same wind capacity. And so, again, that's another concern that we had heard. But all of this is an issue, again, a governance policy issue, but as the city manager said, there's, there's a lot of concern from our administrative staff of how, with the city owning these carts, with our lack of storage, right now, we really don't have, we're struggling as a staff with our space. You know, we have a 1960s building with the new equipment, and what we have, we're really struggling on our space. And we've been doing that with our recycling carts. We've been struggling to find that space. We've even had to, to ask for the good graces of, of our, our partner Connect Transit to utilize their facility for the time being. And that's one of the only ways we've been able to get by. So adding additional carts makes it tough.
Thank you. Alderman Schmidt?
I'm not done yet.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Thanks. Oh, excuse me. Sorry, David.
So appreciate clarification on a couple of those points, because both the administration, I guess the administration was one I was most, most concerned about. And, and I guess, I guess for me personally, I mean, what I've had to work through is, is I've always had my recycling and my garbage in my garage as well. But, but my garage is not, I mean, I would have room for a tote if I wanted to, but I just simply kinda worked through the, whatever issue I might have had with putting it outside my house, which is, it's an aesthetic thing for me. But, but I've kinda worked my way through that. And I guess that part of the value I've seen with the 65 gallon is, for, for both recycling and what I anticipate for the solid waste is, I won't have to make as many trips to the curb with it. I mean, there are a lot of months now where I'll just put my recycling cart out once a month, as opposed to every other week, the way the routing is set up. So, so there are some trade-offs. And, and, and I guess, again, just speaking for myself personally, after I worked through the issue of having the, the bins outside, for me, it's been, like I said, just less, less aggravation for me to have to, to take stuff to the curb every week. So I, I'll be voting against the amendment here in a minute, whenever that comes around. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. And again, we're, we are over time, but I'm gonna let us keep going here. Try to keep it a couple of minutes. Alderman Schmidt, and then Black, and then Mboka, and Fruen.
I'll just keep it brief. I, you know, certainly appreciated what Mr. Brown came to say to us. I think he had some very pragmatic concerns that I've heard from many other people. I don't think that we can just automatically do a one-size-fits-all. I think we need to figure out some kinds of exceptions for people, whether it be because of the kinds of issues where you have no storage, or whether you have some physical challenges. I just think it's, it, we, we can't just force people to take this, or else. And, and if we can put some structure around a 35 gallon refuse cart, and if that's gonna answer some needs, I, I think we, we need to put some effort into doing that for our citizens.
Thank you. Alderman Black?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I'm gonna get on board with this amendment is because I took a call today from an elderly lady who had noted that she has struggles, number one, carrying the, the cart as it is, and was concerned about a 65 gallon. She'd be physically unable to carry that to the curb. And her commentary was that if, you know, we're trying to encourage seniors to stay home longer, this is one way that we can accommodate them. The other thing, too, when it comes to 35 gallon, is that it may encourage people to produce less garbage, which is, I think, we can all agree is a good thing. But if this amendment were to fail, I will support 65 and 95.
Alderman Fruen, and then Millamway.
Is there a short answer to how many, how much interest we've had for 35 gallon carts?
We'd only had a handful of citizens whenever we went through the 65 and 95. I failed to put a number to it, but like, it wasn't an overwhelming issue whenever we brought this to the council previously for a discussion item. I think Mr. Brown was one of the folks even then that had emailed the council. We'd had good discussions, but there wasn't an outpouring. But at the same token, I'm, I'm not saying that there's not interest out there if it were an option, so.
Thank you. Alderman Millamway.
Yes, I, I've had many conversations with Mr. Brown, and I, I, I do agree what's been said already, so I'm not gonna take too much time. But I, I do think, I remember a while back, we, we talked about providing different options for those people who, who might not be able to, to take the ones that we have available, whether it's people who are on disability, or for people who are elderly. So I, I think we, we need to provide that option. And we probably, I mean, we've done a pilot program for just about anything in the city, so I think this is something that we can try. I'm willing to give it a try and see what happens.
And Alderman McDade?
Thank you. Just real quick, I wanted to say, and I'm sorry if it's already been said, but I know there's at least one neighborhood in my ward that doesn't allow carts to be put outside the garages. So that does impact about 110 households. Their neighborhood covenant doesn't allow for that to be possible. And so I have heard from a lot of those individuals, and, and the 35 gallon will provide some additional options for them. So I, I will support that, because I do think that that's necessary. And especially because I know that perhaps those things can be changed in the future. But I, I know when this was being developed, that we didn't have this type of trash program available. So, thank you.
Okay. But at this point, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? The, a yes vote would be to support item A, or, excuse me, 8A, that would include 35 gallon, right? So it's 90, excuse me, 8B, sorry. So it would include 65, 95, and 35 gallon cartons. Everybody clear? Thank you. Madam Clerk, thanks.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Fruen.
Yes.
Alderman Law.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
No.
Alderman Millamway.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. And we're gonna move right along to the city manager's discussion. City Manager David Hales.
Mayor and Council, I did put at your desk, just for your information, some of the work that is, is taking place in connection with not only the street resurfacing bond issue, but we're also, in two weeks, we'll be discussing with you also a proposal to refund another portion of the Coliseum bonds. This, this has been an ongoing effort to continue to look at other bonds that may be good candidates for long-term savings. We thought it'd be appropriate on the 23rd to just give you a quick update on both these. But hopefully, this will show you a couple of key dates. October 15th for the, for the council action, well, 14th for the bond parameters ordinance. And then we'll go ahead and move with the sale of the street resurfacing bonds. And then later, later on, there would be the sale of the refunding bond. So this is just for your information, just to show again, there's a lot of staff time and effort as we deal with the financing portion of those bonds. I, I did wanna point out, too, you know, one of the things council approved in the consent agenda was the Fox Creek Village PUD. I just wanted to compliment staff, because one thing that staff has been doing with some of these older preliminary plans that were approved five, 10, 12 years ago, is that there's a great, a greatly improved, and a positively improved focus on public safety. You saw, like, in this preliminary plan, some elements of emergency access, adding sidewalks, you know, where needed. While there's still issues, but I think a lot has been learned from 10, 15, 20 years ago. And hopefully, we can not only continue with staff, but continue with, with council as we, in the future, talk more and more about sidewalks, and how there is a much greater need for those today than there was years ago. Secondly, hopefully, we'll get into other discussions as, as well on that. And the, the other thing I just wanted, I, is I'll be working with the mayor in the next few weeks. We'll be getting to you just an agenda of some of the big key policy topics coming up over the next four months. You know, and we've been talking about one of the big ones tonight, but we've got property tax increases. We've got the pension fund contribution policy. Next month, we'll be bringing to you the facilities master plan and others. So there's some early pre-discussion fiscal year 2015 budget highlights. So it's gonna be a very active, and I think sometimes complicated, process as we're trying to pull together some of the last pieces for this year of infrastructure improvements and master plans. But then, how do we start to build this, put this together, even for a partial five-year CIP? And how we begin some of those high-level discussions of fiscal year 2015? How do we continue to deal with the affordability and the priority of all these things, whether it's operational or capital? So we'll try and get that so that you'll at least have a better idea of what's coming up between now and the end of December. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you all very much. I, I do wanna start out with, with quite a few thank yous. And I don't mean these to be pro forma. I mean, just truly, I wanna thank our city manager, David Hales, our deputy city manager, Barb Adkins, and Jim Karch, for really being on top of this and making stuff happen. I mean, it should be clear to our citizens. If you thought Bloomington was not responsive in the past, we are now. We're making stuff happen, and we're doing it at a breakneck speed. Thank you all so, so much for all you're doing and your dedication. And I also wanna add an extra thank you to Jim Karch for helping to teach me and to train me for the snowplows, in spite of the fact that I did lose to our distinguished colleague to the north, Chris Coos. I did beat him in time, but I kind of glossed over one little inlet, and I, I guess that sort of cost me the race. But I will live to fight again. Thank you, though, for your help, in spite of the fact that I came in second out of two. But, I, I do also wanna say that we, we talked about the committees, and I've talked to all of you about the committees. And while there are some, a little bit of difference of opinion, no one seemed to be terribly committed to our existing committee structure. So I will be working with our city manager. After this month, we will begin to phase them out. There, there might be some, there might be a residual meeting or two. We'll, we'll be talking about that. And we'll, so that, and I guess the logic would be, we're all there at a committee of the whole. And frankly, I changed my mind on this. When I came in, I thought committee of the whole, that's not really a committee system. And in a sense, if your committee system is specialization, et cetera, division of labor, it's not. But with a group of nine, I, I don't think, I've come to the conclusion that I think we're better off all being at the same place, everybody hearing the same things, so we're all on the same page as we move forward. And I think it's probably gonna be easier on staff, easier on all of us as we move forward. And if at some point in the future, you know, there are some, some thoughts that maybe we should try to revisit this, that's great. But I think right now, we're probably better off moving forward in that direction. I do also wanna say that, just quickly report back, our, our mayoral open house didn't, this was our lowest number of attendees, but we still continued to have a very, very good, robust discussion, people with very, very, very different ideologies, from far left, far right, libertarian, everybody in between, all different perspectives. And yet, people talked as if they were respectful, or they were respectful to each other, respectful of everybody's ideas, realizing that we all want what's best for the city of Bloomington. And so I certainly commend us on that. And thank you, Barb, for helping with that as well. And I, I do also wanna say that for us, on the council, you know, as, as we move forward, I, I wanna thank all the members of the council, and again, I don't mean this as cliche. We are all balancing our personal lives, our professional lives, and our dedication to the city of Bloomington. And so, as we move forward, what I would ask us to do is to remember, we're, we're all grown-ups, and we're all doing the best job we can of trying to balance our personal obligations, sometimes really difficult personal obligations, with what we're doing for the city and our careers. Because actually, unless you live in maybe a small third-world country, you can't live on the salaries that we're paid. So we know that we are not here for the money. We are all here for, for, for different reasons, perhaps, but certainly it's not the money. We all want what's best for the city of Bloomington. So I would hope as we go forward, we all realize, if somebody isn't at a particular event, it's because they've made that trade-off. And I think we just need to, to cut ourselves that slack and, and continue that trust. So anyway, thank you all for everything that you do. And it's a pleasure to be here. I can honestly say that. And moving, let's see, did I have anything else? Mainly, I, I guess I have, I have thank yous to Jim Karch like three times here, Jim. So I'm not sure why I had it down there, but I'm sure I'll be thanking you for something else. That's really all I have. Do I have Alderman, Aldermanic comments? Let's start with Alderman Law, and move from my right to left.
I'm just a bit concerned, Mayor. Thank you for your comments, in, in, in the fact that we're in the interim, changing from the subcommittees over to the committee of the whole, that we do not any longer violate any more of my issues.
Correct.
And so are we to assume that we will be allowing public comment during the subcommittee meetings that are upcoming?
I think we want to abide by the Attorney General's rule, and if for this, this last, these last couple of months, or these last couple of meetings, excuse me, not months, that, yes, have public comments. And, and, you know, and in fairness, there, just to, because obviously, I, I think, pretty much at any meeting, that would be my, if it were up to me, we'd always have public comments. It's just, they were new, and it wasn't clear. So just to, just as a, not as an excuse, but as an explanation, I think, for what happened. I'm sorry.
And just one more little caution. We wanna be very sure that we're posting at least 48 hours in advance, so that we have the complete agenda, trying to move forward to be very, very transparent, and so that the public is well aware of what we're doing prior to us actually taking action. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Alderman Schmidt?
It appears that we are poised for automated voting. There's been a mysterious black box in front of me. Could somebody update us on the status of that?
Black boxes?
It says A and A and E.
We're, we're planning on in October, you know, hopefully, you know, implementing electronic voting. But we do wanna take some time with the mayor on, you know, the mechanics, we're not quite there, but we're getting close. So hopefully in October, you know, we'll be ready to kinda implement that.
Are, are we still gonna be able to be laissez-faire? Because I don't wanna regulate who speaks. Right?
And again, that's just the voting.
This is just the voting. Oh, okay. Yeah.
So, Mayor, you're gonna say, okay, cast your ballots, you're done, and up there on the screens, people will see the vote from each Alderman.
I love it. Awesome. Efficiency, effectiveness altogether. Great. Alderman Black?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm looking forward to, I guess, pressing buttons. It's like playing a video game. Just a couple items here. Just wanted to talk about, I wanted to give a shout out to Barb for helping me out with all the issues that I've been sending her over the last few weeks here. She's been fantastic about getting back to me, and I really appreciate that. One of the things that I, I wanted to bring up, we kinda talked about this during our discussion with our focus group in May, was that early April? I don't, I don't recall. Several months ago. Trying to get to a better feel for the other Alderman's wards. And one of the things I'm gonna start doing is, when I go to a neighborhood association, I'm gonna send a blast email letting everybody know that they should come, too. And I'd, I'd like to get that information as well. Just kinda get a feel for what some of the other Aldermen are facing, the challenges that people are talking about across the city. Because I know that, that the conversation that I've had lately has been really focused on code enforcement and public safety. And these are two of my top priorities, is we, you know, up there with streets and infrastructure. And I really want us to see, I wanna see us get very aggressive, as we have been with streets, about code enforcement and public safety. And we're doing a, an okay job. I think we can improve. And I think getting a sense from some of the Aldermen, you know, that aren't in my ward, to see what challenges we're facing. And I, I'm definitely interested to see what kinda challenges you got, your wards are facing. And so keeping everybody in a loop there. And then, in terms of the committee structure, definitely echoing Alderman Law's commentary about making sure we have 48 hours notice. That's, that's critical for public input and review. Are we talking about October being the first committee of the whole? Or are we talking November?
Actually, David and I, we, we just sort of talked preliminarily. I mean, I think that's, isn't that what we suggested?
That's what I'd recommend. And as the mayor and I've talked, we're actually getting the ordens prepared. If the mayor concurs, we'll have that on the next meeting in two weeks for you to approve. And if so, we're looking at the recommendation being the third Monday of every month, being that committee of the whole, and October would be the first one. So probably next week's infrastructure could be the last.
Yeah, I'm on board.
Of any committees.
Yeah. So then, I guess the follow-up to that would be, we talk about Mondays being the committee of the whole. Is there a logic behind why we choose Mondays? Perhaps we should choose different nights so we can gauge a different?
I think the logic, if I understand it, is that Aldermen and women have said Mondays are the day that I reserve, and we've already done that in perpetuity. I mean, I think that that, is that correct?
I was just curious as to what the logic was. Yeah, I'm not married, too, so if we suggest something else, I would, I can get on board with that.
Given the difficulties we've had in trying to find other meeting times, I, I think I would say, I love Mondays.
Yeah, definitely. I can definitely get on board with that. I was just curious, because I, I was thinking about that over the weekend. And finally, I just wanted to throw a shout out here. I'm part of the Big Brothers Big Sisters Board, and we're having our Laugh for Kids' Act this Friday at the Castle Theater. Last year, I got heckled relentlessly. I'll be sitting in the back. I'll be sitting in the back to avoid that this year, but it's a fun event and goes to charity. So if you have the opportunity, Friday at 7 o'clock at the Castle.
Awesome plug for a great cause. Alderman Fazini.
Cooperation with Town of Normal. I think Barb Atkins at one point said, folks, we have about 200 intergovernmental agreements. We do cooperate. We cooperate a lot, more than anyone in town knows. But recently, we had a reception for our boards and commissions, and it was good to see that Town of Normal sent some representatives to that. I think that was very nice. The Labor Day Parade, we appreciated the fact that they, they provided most of the candy that we threw out, and that we marched together.
Actually, I meant to thank them for that too. Thank you. I forgot that. Yeah, they saved our buttockses.
Yeah.
I'm trying to clean up my act.
But it was good that we did that together, and I hope we keep doing that. I have a piece of paper in front of me that talks about national rankings in 2013, 2012, 2011. It talks about how many square miles are in Bloomington, how many people vote, who our biggest employers are, and it just has a lot of great facts. And I think everybody who bothered to attend this meeting tonight ought to walk out of here with one of these. And I think every meeting, we ought to have them in the back so that you can have one and be proud of your city, because this will help you become proud of your city. And I, maybe you should take some extras. I pass them out. Senator Dick Durbin now has one. We visited with him just recently. And I believe that they're a great way to help sell our community. So if we don't have any in the back now, I imagine we could get some so anybody who's leaving that wants one can have one.
I have them in my office, they're all there. But, but I would generally, Rob, recommend that if you go to parties, you not distribute them because you'll never be re-invited.
Good point, Mayor.
City Manager Hales, did you have anything else? I'm sorry. Okay, well, put my glasses back on. And just to see, okay, at this point, all in favor signify by saying aye for adjournment.
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
I left that faculty meeting for a trip. You'll come to the Capitol.